Yeah.
The regular meeting from March nineteenth, twenty twenty four is now in session. Please rise. Pleasure be allegiance.
Pleasure be allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this state's one nation under God. In this bowl with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, please call the law. Can you draw this clerk?
Councilmember Belton. Descaludi.
Here.
Moranti.
Present.
Mizan. Morris. Fernhagen.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Roney.
I think it's on my down.
It is.
Sauer.
Do answer.
Yeah.
Presidente Pedro.
Here.
For a present.
Can I get an introduction and a second to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February twentieth and twenty eighth meetings and place them on file? Introduction Dominic, second, Margaret. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion. Likewise, copies of the committee reports are posted on the city website. Can I have an introduction and second to place these on file? Margaret and Dominic. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a lot. We have lots of communications, including. I got a lot, a couple late, so twenty five letters supporting Big Towel's license agreement. Can I have an introduction and a second to receive these communications and place them on file? Margaret and Dominic. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, opposed? No. Okay. I want to discuss something very briefly. There's been some conversation about what can and cannot be discussed by group email. When I say group email, I mean every one of us on these emails. And there seems to be a slight misunderstanding. While it is not against the law to express opinions in emails for the entire group, it is best practice not to engage in a conversation through email. And Crystal, would you like to speak to this to make it clear for everyone?
Sure. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So I reviewed the emails and the opinions that was circulated by Margaret and the rule of thumb, black and white law, obviously, is that if there is a meeting, you have to have a meeting, obviously, and you cannot vote outside of the public domain. For, a public body cannot vote outside the public domain. The purpose of the open meetings law, and I think this is the thing that everyone just needs to understand, is so that deliberation and voting is done in a public setting. So while it is best practice to try to keep those communications in a public setting, you obviously can go around and collect information, and you should be able to collect information via email. The only thing I would caution about is that when you get into serial communications where there's a lot of back and forth and it's happening pretty quickly, especially if it's happening close to real time, and those communications ultimately affect how the council is going to vote on something. It's part of, you know, whether it be the part of that deliberative process. That's the part where you start getting into some gray areas and you start getting close to skirting that line. And you don't want to be subjecting yourself to a challenge. So I would say, you know, be cautious of what you're putting, you know, of what's going into these communications. If you're getting information, you're collecting information, fine. If you've got a question on a on a resolution or something that's before the council, that's fine. But once you start getting into pretty quick back and forths, almost like an instant chat type thing or instant emails, and it's on any sort of subject or the communications are going to affect the voting, the deliberative process, that's when you start getting into that gray area that is discussed in that opinion that Margaret sent and a bunch of the other opinions that have been, that have come out since then. So that's where I would caution everyone.
Thank you, Crystal.
Can I ask a question of Crystal?
Sure.
So Crystal, in the opinion, I contacted NICOM because I wasn't sure what the issue was with us having the email exchange and the email exchange just raised opinions on mainly on the fact that we should get documents ahead of time in order to have time to review them, to vote on them. But in the section that I highlighted and in my conversation with NICOM, one of the comment is often those communications, I care, the emails, serve as a means of acquiring or exchanging information, knowledge, expertise, or different points of view. And so I think I understand what you're saying about the deliberative process and that that needs to be public. But I didn't think in the stream of emails that I was seeing that that was deliberation first of all.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the issue about the instantaneous nature of it, again, I did discuss that with NICOM and if everything is instant, yes, it is more like a chat room, which is considered to be a meeting because you're all simultaneously in the same session. But actually, the thing about emails is that we're not all opening them at the same time. And if I'm not on my computer or I'm on a different computer and I don't see the emails, I look at them at the end of the day. So that instantaneous piece does not apply to the entire group. So I understand your caution and the recommendation. I think it's helpful. I would recommend that everybody look at NICOM's open meeting law seminar that is online. But I do think that it can be constructive for us to have emails where we are exchanging knowledge, expertise, and different points of view.
Yeah. I agree with you, except for the last part of that triad.
What triad?
Well, when you said knowledge, expertise, yes.
Well, no, this is coming from the opinion from.
That's a two thousand and four opinion. There's been a lot since then. Was that the opinion that NICOM sent you to? Or did you find that?
No, they sent this. And yeah.
Again, it invites other opinions, and that's what they're trying to avoid because it counts. You can have these conversations amongst yourselves, all, you know, one on one, one to three, whatever, all you want. And again, it's about best practice. It's not about.
But it's not prohibited and we can do it.
Go ahead. And then people know that, you know, in the future, if they want to foil what you've written, you'll be.
Everything in my email is perfectly happy to hand over to the doctor.
Yeah, well, that's why you talk about it in public. That's the point.
Yes. Well, you know, I think it might be helpful maybe to put the entire stream of email on public record as a communication, that people can see what, how you respond to Jenny.
Sure. How I respond to what?
To Jenny.
Which was what?
Which was telling her that you thought she understood this a feast of.
Oh, that wasn't written to her. That was actually written to you. It didn't have a name above. But we can go on about this. Thank you, Crystal, for that, for making it clear, although it doesn't seem to have sunk in. Let's go to resolutions. The first resolution appoints a, Michael, can I get up there? Commissioner Beetz, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris. Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a budget amendment for the purchase of four iPads to be used by the common council members. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Descaludi. Moranti.
Aye.
Morris. Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo. Presidente Pedro.
All right. And this is to remind you all, these are all the resolutions that were discussed at last week's inform. The next one approves, I'm sorry, approves agreement with town of Greenport to provide court security services in authorizing a corresponding budget amendment. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton. Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo. Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
And I remind you too, that if you do want to further discuss these, feel free to bring it up, but.
Joining me. That's Ronnie to have joined.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see it. It just popped off. Okay, thank you.
I joined like three minutes late. Sorry, guys. Should have made myself announce myself.
Thank you.
The next resolution accepts senior center donations. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution supports the appointment of Josh Kahn to the board supervisors county climate smart community task force. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi. Moranti.
Aye.
Morris. Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes the chief of police to establish and implement and oversee a therapy canine program to future custody. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Well, I would like to thank the chief for thinking outside the box in this endeavor. As someone who appreciates his own birth babies when stressed at home, and I have advocated programs for my camp in the past that introduces dogs to people with disabilities. So I think this is a great step forward into opening up our community relations, and I vote aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
And just to echo Dominic, I think this is great.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
And the last, the last week's amendment, excuse me, this amends the budget for the additional pavement markings on Tadic place. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton. Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
Excuse me, new resolutions, which have all been posted in time to be considered, just to make that clear. The first approves the firefighter listing pursuant to the service award program, which we do every year. It just is the commissioner verifies who is qualified for the program. I have an introduction and a second, please.
Can you make a statement? I don't know what it is. Sorry.
Go ahead. Dominic, you're on. I know you're.
So what happens is volunteer firefighters are allocated certain points that allow them benefits at the end of retirement benefits through a state program.
Okay, cool.
So they have to be, there's certain criteria, active, certain calls, you know, certain, certain activities during the year that they can receive those.
Thank you.
Introduction and a second, please. Vicki, second. Then Jenny. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution renews our contract with Hudson Paddles to provide outdoor recreation services. I have an introduction and a second, please.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Jenny? Jenny? Any questions, comments?
I'd like to say something. At some point, we probably should. Oh, first of all, we should have included Oakdale on this. They only put the riverfront.
And say the new one?
They only mentioned we to obey the Hudson, the riverfront rules, but not the Oakdale.
Do they allow them to be used in Oakdale?
Yeah. It's in the contract, so they've not mentioned to follow the rules. So it has to be fair, you know, Oakdale as well. I'm just saying that.
You could add that.
And the other thing is, at some point, when do we raise those fees to send back Hudson?
Well, you can raise that in finance. All fees should be discussed.
But it should be the next year.
Probably, yeah.
So.
If they get around to it. Last one.
Is the Oakdale piece new material or is that?
No, they've been.
They've been doing it. I'm just saying it should be fair or have.
Yep. Add that.
Can you be more clear on what we're adding? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not, it's in the contract.
So right there, it says.
Are you referring to sections three, Vicki?
Yeah, I don't see what you're pressing. I mean, section three covers everything.
I already did say one of the, oh, yeah, docs, the licensee shall follow all rules of docs. Uses for the handling Hudson or one part, including the unlimited overnight use and all that stuff. I think it should just say.
That's just for the docs. There's no.
There's no actual doc. And Dominic, Crystal.
Yeah, so I think first I tried calling them because I had questions, right? Because of, you know, what, because it is mentioned in Oakdale, so what did they do in Oakdale? And I think that we should have the standard if we're asking towels, big towels, you know, to put things in here about the rules. I think it should apply if they're including Oakdale and including the riverfront, the same rules should apply in terms into the contract about obeying the rules, the laws and things like that, right? Because there's rules, you know, there's no smoking, there's things like that. So we want to make sure that lease is in there.
But it is. I mean, it said the licensee must promptly comply with all city, county, state, federal laws, statutes, rules, regulations. And Hudson towels are going in the water for this big towel, I know.
Right, this is what I'm saying. So that, but in water, they're still not allowed to swim, even if they're in water.
That's the rules.
Right, this is the rules.
Right, that covers it, I think.
But, but I also want to know what their safety plan is. There's nothing in there what their safety.
Safe.
Right, so I want to know what the rules are, right? So if someone's in Oakdale and their rules is to have life preservers and they don't have, if somebody doesn't have a life preserver, right? So I want to know what their safety plan is, and it should be part of the contract. So we're, we know what their rules are, their plans are on, you know, their, you know, their rules of the docs. Because they also have, you know, or the yoga paddles and things like that. So what are the rules? So are you doing yoga on a paddle in the water? Or is, you know, what are, what are rules? Right? So I think we need more information. Section. Sorry. Go ahead. Section two B four, no, sorry, three, does say that the licensee will create a safety plan which will be available to local code inspection and public health officials. That's where that's big spot. So that's not, but we talking about the same thing.
No, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same. It's, this is the agreement with Hudson Paddles. Okay, so what, because I'm going to recommend the same thing for towels, right? Is that that safety plan should be onsite for review for one employees, right? Employee should know what the safety plans. If the safety plan's locked up in, or anyone using the facility should know the safety plan.
Okay, how about we add section two B and also at the site. Is that what you want?
Yeah, and that's.
So can I get a motion?
Make the motion.
To include comma and also on the site.
Any.
First, second? Vicki? Do we have like a, like a list of rules on Oakdale? We'll definitely post it. That with this, we put it on the board.
They are posted.
Yeah, right.
I have a picture of it if you want.
Yeah, Dominic and Vicki was second. So we need to put on that first. So vote to amend it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, now we can go down the actual contract. Any more questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton. Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
Excuse me. The next resolution authorizes a budget amendment and the transfer funds to the twenty twenty three bond anticipation notes interest expense. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Vicki, second?
Can someone?
Well, hold on. We first, we usually introduce first and then it's. And Rich, since you.
Well, stuck.
Yes, and then you can explain since it was your committee that.
This was, this was last, this was last night, right? Yeah. Right. So correct me if I'm wrong here, but according to Heather, after the audit of two thousand.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, thank you. That they realized that they were appropriating funds into the wrong accounting ledger. So they had to reappropriate it into a different ledger account. And I'm sorry, I don't know all the details on that, but basically after the audit came through, they realized that, so, so this is just a correction of the accounting from previous years. They just posted to the wrong account.
The twenty twenty one audit was very, very delayed.
Totally.
And so by the time that the twenty twenty two one was being done, you know, she thinks she's, it's already probably also not directly ten, three, three. So because there was a huge delay on the archetypal that identified.
And they hadn't had that issue prior to two thousand and four, something, the first time they posted.
That was the first time.
The entries.
Yes.
And now? Hey, roll call voters.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes transfer funds to cover twenty twenty three personal services expenditures. An introduction and a second, please. Vicki? And Rich, questions?
This is similar. What happens is that at the end of the year, they have to, if there's money left over from like things or there's money allocated and it's not necessarily spent, then they need to post the entries so they know they're going for the coming, towards the following year, how to.
So this was money not spent? Or is it money that was owed?
Can I explain?
Yeah, please have a say, my goodness.
I was waiting to be questioned on the previous one. I'm surprised nobody asked.
How did I do on the previous one?
You did, you did okay.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll take it away. I look like you.
Okay, so basically what happens is at the the first paycheck of any given year, so the first paycheck of twenty twenty four is almost always going to involve some days that need to be what's called charged back to twenty twenty three. So if we issue a paycheck in the second week, you know, the first week of twenty twenty four, probably half of that paycheck is actually for, you know, the last seven days of twenty twenty three. So to properly account for that, we have to do journal entries to charge that back. When, and we get that from the payroll clerks that do the payroll. When, when we went, when my office went to charge them back, some of the accounts were short. And there were three basic reasons why that happened. The reason for the common council one, which is the largest one, is that for some reason the twenty twenty three budget did not include a separate expenditure line item for Linda Fenoff, who does all the minutes. But there was plenty of money left over in the council personal services to cover that. The second largest one is in my office, and that was, that was an error in that this was the first year where, so because of the union contracts, you're allowed to, in addition to your salary and, you know, you get longevity payments, depending on how long you've worked there. You also have the opportunity under the CSEA contract to get a certain amount of buyout days of sick time paid to you. You can also turn in some of your vacation time and get paid, that paid out to you. And so we always ask our employees, are you planning on selling back any time? Are you selling, I'm planning back vacation or sick time? This year was the first year we also had a new buyback for compensated absences. And what that means is basically you work an extra hour at night or you have to come in on a holiday. You know, you get comp time. It's called comp time. And, and that's a calculated number. We carry it on the books. It's not a small thing. But under the guidance of Elena DeFeo King, who is our, you know, sort of labor attorney, she recommended and the previous council approved the fact that the amount of comp time that could be carried over from year to year would be limited. As a result, there were several employees who had more comp time than they were allowed to carry over, and we were required to pay that out. So they would bring their comp time on the books down to the maximum that the previous council had recommended. That was not included in my budget because that was a new thing that, that we just didn't quite have a handle on. The rest of them are all basically rounding errors except for obviously the last one. And the last one is obviously because of the death of Sergeant Philly, we had multiple payouts for him, including his accrual time. You've approved previous resolutions for paying out, you know, the, the legal benefit that we had in separate. In this case, the police department was actually able to cover all but five thousand dollars of the accrual payout to Sergeant Philly's family. In this case, the police department was actually able to cover all but five thousand dollars of the accrual payout to Sergeant Philly's family. And we had, in the contingent, we had money for an entire retirement for him. So that's actually less money than what got paid out to him in terms of his accruals. But because they had some excess in their budget, that is the total amount that they required in order to make that, uh, to make that budget whole. And that is why you'll see that's coming out of contingent, because that is where we in fact had the money budgeted specifically for his. We, we had hoped it would be a retirement, uh, and unfortunately it was, you know, a different situation.
Meaning that.
Hello, hello, Rich. Any questions? Thank you, Heather. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Morris. I apologize. Mison.
Hi.
Dersha?
Thank you.
Yes.
Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution, uh, provides funding for the relocation of the Code Enforcement Office. An introduction in a second, please. Vicki? And which is moving here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions? Everybody understand what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Hi.
Morris. Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Next resolution. Uh, citywide events. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Vicki and Jennifer. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Dersha?
Hi.
Thank you. Morris, Karen, Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts. Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Just so everyone knows, a big thank you to Michael Hoffman for creating the event form. Uh, we discussed this in finance last night. We will be sending out a press release or a statement that says that organizations can apply these grants. These grants are left over from the tourism funding, which was from a few years ago, I guess. There's, there's thirty thousand dollars that's allocated, uh, for event funding. Our deadline will be April twelfth. So, um, and when the finance committee will re, will meet again to determine, uh, you know, who gets what. And so, yeah, so be on the lookout for that release statement, hopefully by the end of this week or next week. And, um, that's the plan.
Thank you, Rich.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next simple resolution reappoints Michael Lahares onto the CAC, the Constitution Advisory Council. An introduction and a second. Rich, second?
Thank you, Vicki. Well, unless there's a question, a roll call vote.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Hi.
Morris. Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorized transfer of funds to cover purchase of some parking meter equipment. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Vicki? I guess I can, technically. Oh, second. Okay, then I should. Someone else? Thank you, Gary. Any questions?
Yes. How many parking meters are broken? Many are broken?
Tracy?
So I don't know how to quite answer that question. What happens is, um, we have equipment that was either destroyed by car, car accidents. Um, we had three in like six months period of time. We have some that we can't get into because of there's jams. To have that total number to give you off the top of my head, because we've been taking meters from the municipal lot in Columbia Street, making them for us only to put them onto the orange street. And that's what we've been shifting around. Um, and, and now we don't have any more. We didn't have any more. Um, no equipment had been budgeted for a couple of years.
Okay.
So we now will have an inventory to replace the ones that neither can't get into, Laxman can't get into, um, and we can't wait.
To balance.
Yeah, what's the current status of replacing these meters? Well, that's the parking committee.
We haven't had one yet.
We, we have that meeting.
We have.
We have a meeting.
Right, I've only had one presentation so far.
They'll have one.
Yeah, there's two same lined up. The plan was, um, presentation through summer, RSP by the end of the summer, a decision by the fall.
Tracy, how many meters is this going to drive to? Isn't it?
Yeah, we don't.
Is it enough?
We just asked.
No, but no, no, no.
This covered, so the housings, there was nine duplex housings that will cover four single housings.
Okay.
Um, we did four inserts.
Is that like a component of one?
Yes, that's the inner part of it.
Yes. So, so it's hard to say how many it is because the insert piece is not a whole meter where it's only the houses are.
They are separate, yes.
Donald?
So do you think, so Tracy said that if a vehicle, vehicle might have done the damage, one day vehicle insurance cover?
Yes.
Value?
Yes, and they have, they have reimbursed.
Right, so, um, another thing too is as, you know, as we're pondering getting a new one, right? Are these, um, something that we can turn in and get, um, credit for or value for if we upgrade?
Um, I'm certain there may be a need for them elsewhere, whether you're staying with other surplus equipment, declare it and then.
Definitely.
Put it out for auction like they do the vehicles and different things.
Yeah, okay, that, that's, that's what I, thank you.
So one, one of the things in last night's meeting, where, when we talked about this, that Heather talked about was that, um, not replacing them. But I think Heather, I'm gonna probably get, get this wrong if I paraphrase it, but we don't want to, um, disadvantage or advantage one block of town over another. And so by having this inventory, we're ensuring that it's kind of equality across the city. That was, I did, that's, I think, yep.
Yep, and, and does all this fall during your jurisdiction, Tracy, if I don't?
Number thirteen and John.
Is that a bad question? Sorry. No, just.
Back in two thousand eighteen, the Park and Bureau, just a quick summary, the Park and Bureau split between the revenue, clerk collecting and appeals to the enforcement that wants to look at this. So, um, um, I oversee, manage the revenue portion of it, the clerk, the appeals. And somehow the meters were rolled into that.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Tracy. We're doing the best. Yes, we appreciate it.
I'm going down to the train station, working on that kiosk the other day. I had to put that other hat on and that was, I had to put, get into my mechanical mode, so.
Which is why we're trying to.
Yeah, there is no, I have no training on it. It's getting on the phone with a gentleman out of New Jersey and grabbing somebody else because we needed four hands trying to lead everything in that.
So it's, it's two totally different park meter companies to do the two different types of meters.
Yes, yes, no.
Right, always.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Are we ready? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Dersha? Unload.
Hello?
I think they're frozen.
Yeah, sound, look like it. Michael?
Oh.
Michael?
We're not in the main meeting anymore.
Yeah, we, we are in a wedding room, I think.
I think that is coming, Michael, can it, hey?
Sorry about that. We were just gonna, we're back.
Are we, are we online?
Yes.
Any minutes? Are you from that? Yeah, fifty minutes. Okay, for those who are online, we were disconnected for a while. Nothing, we immediately ceased and now we will pick up where we left off. We're in the middle of the voting.
Councilmember Mison.
Hi.
Morris.
I'm sorry, what are we going on?
You're voting on the parking meters.
Yes.
Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo. Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
We're gonna, um, skip the next one to the end since there's gonna be more discussion about that, get these other three done more expeditiously. Uh, the next is authorizing the encumbrance of twenty twenty three funds to twenty twenty four. I have an introduction in a second, please. Rich and Vicki. As you may know, this just means money that is encumbered, it transfers from twenty three budget to the twenty four budget. And it's in the central, is that right, Heather? If you're there?
That is correct. So it is specifically not just money in the budget, but money that has been contractually committed through either a purchase order or a contract for services or products. So basically, you order something in twenty twenty three, you've got the money for it in twenty twenty three, but it's not going to come in until, say, June of twenty twenty four. We basically take that money because we've contractually admitted it's not going to hit the twenty twenty three budget, so that money is still available. It goes through a bunch of gyrations you don't need to know about on the balance sheet, but eventually the money gets put back into the twenty twenty four budget so that they can pay for that product or service that they had contracted for in the previous year. We do this every year.
Thank you, Heather. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Hi.
Morris. Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts. Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution declares, uh, the combined sewer overflow mitigation project as a type two action and not subject to review under SEAKER. SEAKER stands for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We've done this before, even this year. Uh, an introduction and a second, please. Vicki and Carrie. Okay, questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Hi.
Daskaloudi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Hi.
Morris. Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
And the next one also related to the same project, as Rob described last week, is a, um, authorizes, uh, our application for funding for that project. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Vicki? And Carrie, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, I don't, it's not a question. I guess it's a question, but Rob is around here. Um, I know, will this help the North Sixth, uh, Street where they don't strip? For some reason, they never, something, there is an issue with that street, that they're not, they don't strip the.
Even the, I'm, I'm confused, what?
So they, we'd be getting a lot of complaints about the North Sixth Street because, um.
Right here, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If you notice, they sweep all the streets except for this one. And there is a reason for that, which I don't understand, I don't remember.
I mean, after the Oakdale.
Yeah, uh.
Because that's the later infrastructure. Oh.
More, it's right where the back door factor is.
Oh, okay.
So, and I wonder if this whole system by cleaning it and all that, is that's gonna help?
It definitely does, because it takes, it takes the street dirt, puts it into a separate sewer.
So why are we doing the sixth of the street and the seventh street? Are these streets, we don't sweep them? That's why we have to keep doing this once in a while?
I don't know that.
I know, this is too technical. I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely a legitimate question. Ask Rob. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh.
Real quick. For your, how would you ask Rob? Would he be here in the meeting?
Yeah. He's in ours.
He's on the forum.
Oh, yeah. He's been our, yeah.
Yeah.
He's been, yeah.
We're getting a lot of emails about, like you said, I don't know, I don't know what to say any of these, there's a lot of emails and can't keep up. I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, you, you don't have to, I mean, if it's.
Oh, yeah, I won't, I don't.
Right, not addressed directly, you don't.
No, 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 it's just a lot.
Don't worry about it. There are people who like to email. Uh, where are we?
Daskaloudi. Moranti.
Hi.
Mison.
Hi.
Morris. Karen Hagan.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Volo. Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
I just want to let everybody know that in thirteen minutes, our three internet members will be, um, leaving. So.
Four internet members.
The three. Dersha, Ronnie and. And, um. Go on.
I kill about seven oh four.
Oh, okay, seven oh four. What did you do to your head?
Well, this is part of my trip away from the country. I had to shave my head. It's part of a religious thing.
Oh, okay, sorry. I just, I'm not that guy, that's not you.
I was, I was gonna make the joke that I missed Ryan so much, I tried to follow this.
Okay, our last resolution authorizes the execution of the license agreement being down the spot. Let's get an introduction in a second, first. Vicki? Second. Lola, okay. Uh, there were a lot of questions when this was first presented to us. I think Kelly has addressed many of them. Uh, you have?
And more.
More.
If you're willing to listen. Um, thanks again. I just want to pass all these out. This is a copy of a waiver that's been reviewed by. If you're willing to listen. Thanks again. I just wanna pass all these out. This is a copy of a waiver that's been reviewed by Crystal.
Great.
Along with a map, because one of the things that I do wanna speak to is that I just wanna show how far people are coming to use the saunas as well, especially during a times when there's I think people complain a lot that there's nothing to do here, or that tourism is dying, or that businesses are struggling. And I feel like most of the people that are coming from far away end up going to dinner or going to lunch, and so it's bringing in money to different businesses around town, which I've heard from other fellow business owners, because I am a member of the Business Coalition. I also wanted to address your concern, Dominic, where in the waiver it does say, I must abide by the Oakdale rules. It also doubles down on no alcohol, smoking, vaping at all, ever. I added language in regards to going into, I added even stronger language in regards to going into the lake. It's not something that I current, it's something that I want. And also, I just wanted to point out that in my letter to the council, I said that I would offer dump picks at both locations, not just the river. I also just wanted to bring up, because I'm not trying to stir it, but people will be going into the lake, like regardless if my saunas are there. And I think it is a bitter issue that the city needs to address, but I see people come and go in and swim laps. Even in the winter, there was a woman swimming for an hour the other day, like laps with like a whole scuba thing. So, and that's that's gonna happen whether or not we're here. So I do think I would love to be a part of a conversation on how I can support the city. I don't want anything bad to happen. I don't want anyone to get hurt.
Well, of course, you're not responsible for any of this, but if you see one of your customers, you know, going in and then jumping out, just tell them, hey.
Of course.
Don't do it.
Of course. And that's now in the waiver, but I just wanted to bring that up because I am passionate about Oakdale. I think it's a great resource. I think it's so cool that it's like right here, that's so rare.
Yeah, and you're right, because even before your towels came, it has been an issue and it's been troubling. We've been addressing with the police department, you know, so.
I'm on lawyers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I am in conversation with other people in the community about, whether that be Peter Frank, Liz York, Myrie, about how we can, you know, make this resource the most accessible, but also the safest and the best for our community, and that I'm passionate about that. So I'm happy to be involved over that.
Maybe put a sign right where the, right by the water.
I say there is one by the water every day, no swimming. So.
I'll point out also that in in response to Gary's request, you've moved them further east behind the benches. And I think you'll agree that that satisfied her.
Yes.
I was worried for that.
Yeah, and thank you for the consideration.
It's also only eight weeks, so I don't plan to take up, or I I think it'll be a cool introduction to the waterfront. It's by no means meant to stay longer than, especially when we get into the busier seasons. It's really for the shoulder seasons, if you think about it. The whole project is meant to be an off-season project, really.
But there are a lot of people down there.
Really? I've never seen anyone at those benches. Will you send me a photo?
At around eight o'clock, I'm down there.
In the morning.
I'll throw a four.
Okay, because I always go.
Days a week.
Okay.
And and there's regulars down there. Yeah, I'm not making this.
Okay, no, I trust you. I just, whenever I'm there, I'm like, this is a ghost town.
That's why we love it.
Yeah.
You know, because there's no one there.
Well, you should come.
Well, I plan on it. But just don't mess with my views.
Okay. Well, now you can have your views from the sauna.
Sounds good. But I do have a question about the liabilities. Is Crystal on the phone?
Yes, she is.
Crystal?
Yeah, I'm here.
Should should we be concerned about the liability issues?
So what we have in here is we have a indemnification and hold harmless clause, and what I did do, so if something happens and it is it has to be a big towel spa customer and they ha- it has to have been caused by their use of the property for the indemnification, hold harmless to trigger. So if there is another issue where other residents are coming in that are completely separate from Big Towel, obviously, that language and their insurance policy is not gonna be able to help us. But with respect to their customers, we do have indemnification and hold harmless in here. There is a requirement that Big Towel have a three million dollar policy that names the City of Hudson as an additional insured. And it also require, we also added language in here that was very expressed for this license after the last meeting, expressly prohibiting the the swimming swimming in Oakdale Lake, and also that it is Big Towel's sole responsibility to enforce and police their customers in that regard. So I think that if it comes down to a Big Towel customer, I can never promise that the city's not gonna get sued. You can file a lawsuit essentially against anyone. But I think that we would have a very strong case to be able to tender that lawsuit over to Big Towel's insurance company to handle it.
Thank you. Margaret?
So in all of this conversation, talking about swimming, you know, swimming in the lake, could that language be changed to say that they cannot enter the lake? Because what people are doing when they're in a sauna is they're using water as a plunge. They're not swimming. They're just going into the water. And it would be more accurate to say what they are not permitted to enter.
I mean, that's a question for you. I'm not the one writing the letter. That's a crystal question.
Crystal, what do you think?
Yeah, so we can change, we can revise the license agreement to, you know, instead of referring to swimming, we can say any use of Oakdale Lake is prohibited. And take out swimming instead, you know, just swap use for for swimming.
Okay, give me a second here to find it, and we can.
It is, yeah, I'm sorry, it's on, let's see, I just had it too. It's paragraph three under licensee duty to obey laws and regulations. I mean, there's a general requirement that they have to obey all laws and regulations, and then you look at the very last sentence on that where it talks about it's expressly understood.
Yeah, so we will change the word swimming.
To any use of Oakdale, yeah.
I mean, Jenny had an example, Jenny.
Well, I was just thinking of myself, and if I were in a sauna and I ran into the water just to splash myself, I might have a heart attack. Just say it. So that's what I was thinking. If you, you know, hopefully people are smart and they don't do things that are gonna tip themselves at risk, but.
Right, but we're focused on changing the swimming to any.
Use.
Use.
Use of the lake at.
And and just to be clear, we act- I actually did have that language, the use language, as opposed to just swimming under licensee default, where we talk about, hold on, I'm just trying to go. It's under paragraph eight, sub-paragraph D, it's the hold harmless and indemnification language. I actually specifically put there arising from the use of licensee's customers and or invitees of Oakdale Lake specifically. So that is a broader, that is that broader language.
Thank you, Crystal. So first, I need a introduction. Second, to amend this section of the license. Jennifer and Vicky, all those in favor, say hi.
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
So while we're changing it, can we also add that onsite?
The safety.
Safety plan onsite, yeah.
I also, yeah, and everyone who works for me is trained in CPR and will have lifeguarding. Not that we advertise that to your point, Donna, it's something that we're saying.
Right.
But it is something that I do, and we do have the emergency numbers associated on our little locker thing already, but it just.
Okay, but you sound written safety plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the written written safety plan can be accessible for onsite.
Yes, I'm gonna add that right now, Donna, just like it's the same language as the last one.
Yes.
Which was.
Is there actually a jury? Wait, hold on a second. Let's do one at a time. What do you put down?
I don't really know. I don't know. Not accessible to me.
And also unsafe. Okay, I need a.
Need AD.
I need a vote. I mean, I need a introduction in a second to add, and also onsite. Introduction, second. Vicky, Jennifer, all of you in favor, please say goodbye to saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's been added also to the licensing agreement. Rich, did you have more you wanted to? I missed what you guys were talking about.
We were talking about having the CPR equipment onsite as well, but I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's.
Maya, is there CPR equipment in the?
I actually do not know.
Yeah.
In the building, so.
Hey, you're talking about AD? Yeah, no, probably not.
I don't think we're trained, we're not, yeah, we're not trained.
It has to be licensed and trained and certified through the state.
Yeah.
We have a first aid kit.
That's good.
Vicky?
I just wanna say that overall, you've done, this is with a small business, with a small business, which it's a very innovative. They're a very hard worker. You're there ten hours a day, and you know, I can mention.
Thank you.
Trials, doing very well.
And let me say, if it's really continues to be successful, we'll we'll ask for more money. Are you ready? Only raising the fees.
I mean, I.
Just warning.
Like there is a consciousness that's focused on community.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we need more of that.
Thank you.
Exactly. And I'm tempted, because I'm I'm here, there's a lot of therapeutic, and I'm I'm thankful, but my fear is I might fall asleep and then my.
Okay, we can go together. Don't worry about that. No one else can blame you.
Yeah.
But when you say.
Which I'll go watch.
Utilities at the water.
Sound.
Oh, I'll just, there's a hose hookup underneath the.
Okay. So just water?
Just water, no electricity, yeah.
Is there a community day? I'm sorry, is there a?
So Monday, I'll just say it on the record. Friday, Saturday, Sunday are our private days, up to six people, for an hour and forty-five minutes. You make a private reservation. Mondays are a public day. You can buy an individual pass for twenty-five dollars for an hour and forty-five minutes, but you just might be with people if you don't know, but that might be fun, or it'll help you not fall asleep or whatever. And then we do have some events on the weekends where that becomes public as well.
Ready?
Yep.
Let's move.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Maranti.
And thank you for working with us. I appreciate it.
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Mison.
Eva.
Morris. Turnhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
I think they're still here.
Roney.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presancy Piacho.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
For working with us. Okay, I guess. So, Phil. First, an introduction, and second, please. Gary and Vicky. Questions?
That twenty-five thousand is for what?
Where are we?
Hudson. I am. Use program.
That's that's.
That's the, oh, it's HCDPA, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Calvin, do you want to speak that?
Yeah, that's the.
The one there?
Yeah, that's the money we tribute to the Hudson, Hudson Trust Fund.
Every year, we're thirty thousand.
But that's what was allocated to.
That's right.
Through the year.
Exactly. Actually, last year, which.
Right, last year.
Well, there's another one that's going this, that we're doing for this year. Yeah, there's there's actually two, right? Well, we didn't do last year, so so it's plain catch-up.
How much is?
Thirty-five, yeah. Thirty-five, the new ones are gonna be thirty-five, right?
The new one.
Other questions?
And the KR of Stars, who is the city hall?
No, that's the the grant.
CDVG.
The CDVG renovation grant. It's all that is, flat degree, KR.
So I did want to, Heather.
Heather? Are you there? You are, we can't hear you.
Use program.
Sorry, a question. Heather, here's.
No, I'm here, sorry. My my computer screen is cracked, so my mouse is erratic at best. So, yeah.
There, my understanding here, I just wanted to remind everybody of this, when we talked about it last year, that we are paying this bill, but this is actually a grant, and it's, I understand that as really a pass-through. Is that correct?
The CDVG housing, yes. It's a half a million dollar grant, and all of that is being paid out of that. It just has to be submitted for reimbursement once the invoices come in. And I do wanna just echo what I think Dominic said, that you can see that the HCDPA, there's the thirty-five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four, and then in the twenty twenty-three is the twenty-five thousand dollars because they had not submitted for that during the calendar year of twenty twenty-three. So those two payments will get us caught up on the payments that we have committed through the budget to the Housing Trust Fund.
Where's the twenty-five thousand?
All the way to the bottom for the twenty twenty-three invoices.
Thank you.
I missed the other one here. More questions? Any other questions, I should say? Then let's move.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Descaludi.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Morris. Turnhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
I was there. Yeah.
Star.
Also gone, both gone.
Bolo.
Aye.
Presancy Piacho.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay. Film law is stalled right now, and it'll come up again at the next legal meeting where we can consider two communications from the Hudson Business Coalition.
We we received a communication actually after the scheduled.
No, we didn't actually. We got it before, as anybody at the meeting could have told you. So they brought it in personally. The three local laws, which have been all approved, embedded, and everything else you could possibly want.
So I would like to speak about the film law.
Why? We're not gonna discuss it tonight, because we have to, I thought you wanted to, Margaret, I think this is very. Why? You weren't at the legal committee where we would have discussed it, and we will discuss it at the next legal committee. And not everybody has the document that you're referring to. So. Ready? Okay.
We need a therapy dog right now.
Some of the things you can never deal with. I've heard this. So let's move right along.
That's enough.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah.
You don't know what it's like. I don't know what it's like. Listen, the lack of respect is disgusting.
What are you?
That's a two-way street, Tom.
Yeah, right.
Right? I mean, I'm just saying, right?
It's a one-way street, actually, Donna.
No, I'm saying this.
It's totally stupid. Not a one-way street.
Yeah.
It's a stubbornness that does not listen to anything that's being said, repeats endlessly the same thing, but we can stop there if you want. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
What do you mean, thanks for what?
Inappropriate. For what you just said.
Okay, but but I'm just saying, couple things, Tom, and you need to be understanding. To say that, repeating things, I think that's unfair, because you don't know where Margaret's in here, right? So so to say that, I think we need to be more receptive to what's going on, right? So, but again, I think we need to, it's still, we're three months into this, man, come on. We got two years. Let's let's make this roll, right?
It's been very difficult, three months.
I, it, again.
People are not doing the work that they should be doing.
But again, Tom, that's your thoughts that need to stay in your head, right, in some regards, because some of us are.
Oh, I know, I'm telling you.
You pull us into a pool, and I think Margaret, if you do, talking about Margaret, I think she's done a hell of a job, right?
Yeah.
And Vicky, I think everyone's rich and they're trying to play catch-up here. I think they've done a hell of a job, right? So but to isolate us, we need to stay together, right? Because there's some things we gotta vote on that we need to be a team.
Sure.
Right?
Well, there's gonna be differences, but yeah.
Absolutely, but but that's conversation and negotiating and life, right? And that's working together.
But.
No one needs to be disrespectful.
Well, I agree with that for sure.
Well, we've criticized others in the public.
Yes.
For the snarkiness, right?
Right.
So we have to hold that towards us.
And that probably includes facial expressions, too.
Do I have them?
No, I'm not referring to you. Okay, yes.
If I need time in it.
No, sorry, this is it.
Okay, so I'm kind of sorry, where will we be, Tom?
Well, for some reason, we did have the film law on the agenda for the last legal meeting that did not occur. Alex was there with the two documents that are being referred to. I don't see the point in wasting time now discussing stuff that isn't available.
But may I say something, Tom?
Sure.
So.
Always.
Alex has information that could be valuable. He might dismiss what he did.
I'm not.
No, no, but if we wait one more time, you know.
We can circulate before the the legal committee.
That's, either either way.
Absolutely.
Again, to, again. To go backward and say, well, the, we know legal committee, whatever happened to legal, whatever was, it, it's in the past, right?
Correct.
Because there's other meetings, right, so let's move forward and say, well, what are we gonna do with the.
I agree with you totally, Tom, that's all I was suggesting, really, was that we.
Stop agreeing with me, I don't like it.
We circulate this, we circulate these documents and discuss them at the legal committee, that's all I said.
Okay, and that's where, is, that's what you're talking about, Margaret?
Yeah, but I think that the email that he sent, when he sent the communication to Jenny, I think they're on email, I thought he sent it to everybody.
That's what I.
I see, which one are we talking about now?
The communications, he sent a communication uh, last, last.
Yeah.
With, with the two documents to every member of the council.
Go ahead.
I don't remember, I got, I got Jenny's cheat sheet, but I, I didn't get it.
It didn't just go to legal committee. But it doesn't matter, we discussed it on the other night.
Right, okay, so, we're all set here now to move forward?
Yeah, it went to everyone, sorry.
Okay. But I don't think, are, are there anybody prepared to discuss it right now, I mean?
Yeah, I was going to bring up a couple of points, but you said not to, so we're going to do it in the legal committee, and we'll bring it back to this committee.
Great. Next. Serenity now. Okay, as you know, these three laws are all pretty self-explanatory. And let's go through them, my one, they're just creating exemptions for firefighters, ambulance workers, uh, senior citizens with limited incomes and people with disabilities, one by one. The first one, can I have a sec, uh, introduction, a second, please? Gary, second. This is for the uh, volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Okay, Vicky?
This clarification, Tom?
Yes, sir.
You said, just so you know, you're saying ambulance workers, we're not, they're not workers, they're volunteers, right, that's what we're saying. Because employee.
Yeah, no, it does say volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers.
Right, but, okay, but, when you say workers, right?
Yeah.
That's implying employment? Right?
No, but volunteer covers that, workers, volunteer workers.
I, I just don't want misconception, that, that's all, because ambulance get paid.
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying, but, yeah, I think it's, I think it's just a question, I think it's, I think it's clear that volunteer.
I think.
Okay, okay, we can do that.
Yes, that's.
Jeez, but if we change the law, then we get, Crystal, do we have to go through the whole process again, if we add that word?
Um, the, just, just to be clear, the language taken from this is taken from the state statutes, so that's where the references come into play, but um, what, what's the change that wants to be made, workers to?
To, no.
Volunteer status or something, because that.
It says right now, excuse me, stand down, it says volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Dominic would like to put volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers.
I would say volunteer endless members, right, because again, they're members of a volunteer service. Because, I would say that because right now currently Greenport has minimal volunteers and more workers, right, in, in the local ambulance service.
I, can I just bring up that the qualifications for this exemption do specify that the applicant had uh, resides in the City of Hudson, um, uh, sorry, is, is, is a member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated volunteer, voluntary ambulance service. Okay, so as far as the actual people receiving this, it is clear that it is for voluntary ambulance service workers, or service members. I mean, the title may not be clear, but the, the quality.
Yeah, and I would agree, I would, i- if at all possible, I would prefer to keep it as is, to have to avoid having to, to reintroduce it, because it really is, I mean, this is based right off of the state statute, and the qualifications um, just as mentioned, were, are outlined for volunteers.
I'm in perfect house. Okay, we, we have an introduction in seconds?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we, like, time to record again.
Councilmember Belton, aye.
Descaludi, aye.
Maranti?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presde Pietro?
Aye.
The next one is for senior citizens with limited incomes. Volunteer or not? Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Jennifer? Vicky? Questions?
Roll the law.
Excuse me, local voters, what was that?
I was just wondering what this was, I'm a senior citizen, so I'm.
What, do you own, do you own, do you have properties?
No.
Okay, then.
At least for property.
Property. We get passing that, you would get it, right, we get a tax.
Thank you for clarifying this, Volo.
So we're there. Take a local vote, yeah.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Descaludi?
Aye.
Maranti?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presde Pietro?
Aye.
Okay, the last law. The last law creates an exemption for real property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. Introduction in a second, please. Vicky? Gary? Questions? Local voters.
Councilmember Belton, aye.
Descaludi?
Aye.[1728.94]